...out there. We ran them off, but we welcome everyone that could come. And we welcome, again, all of the, everyone that's here on the council participating. We appreciate that very, very much that you're here. We'll do some announcements on that later, but let's go ahead on the agenda. Let's go ahead and we'll have our opening here. The opening here is by Councilwoman Catherine Buse.
Thank you. As I looked over the agenda and I saw what we had, we were talking a lot about council goals and some of the goals that we're going to set individually as council members. And I came across a quote that says, "Without continual growth and progress, such words as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning." So I love that we're setting goals and we're, if some of us are new council, we're going at this, and I think we have that attitude of continually trying to improve and build and work together, and I look forward to doing that today. Also, I would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anyway, just a reminder, make sure that the little green dot is on all your microphones so that we can be heard. Let's start right off with the minutes, or excuse me, the agenda. Everyone looked at that, on the amended agenda that was sent out?
Move approval of the amended agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moving to second, we have approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. How about the minutes? Have you guys looked over those? I think everyone was there on the 10th. Any changes, additions?
The only change, maybe a clarification, was at the end of the minutes, it talks about the council members, discussed council member goals, but we didn't actually do that.
Yep, we'd actually postpone that to this week. So we'll make that correction. Any motion there to actually accept the minutes?
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented with the change.
With the change, okay. Any's there a second?
I'll second it.
Moving to second, we accept the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Let's go to Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your counseling report. Thank you. Just a couple of items. As everyone knows, our legislative session has kicked off, and it's going to be a busy several weeks. Just want to thank everybody who's been helping out with that process so far and engaged. A lot of important things, a lot of important discussions happening. Look forward to working with all of you on that. I mentioned at the last meeting, the PIT count, the point in time homeless count that is happening this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, early morning, if you are able to help with that. There is a training that happened last week. If you weren't able to attend that, there's a video that you can watch before you do that. We'd love to have you help out. Thank you for those of you who already are. We had a brag meeting on Friday, and I just wanted to report that Councilmember Goodlander was nominated and unanimously approved as the vice chair of that group. So thank you, Councilmember Goodlander, for being willing to serve in that capacity. That means next year she'll be the chair, so.
I know.
Thanks for being willing to lead and brag. It's a great, great organization. I did, I had a conversation last week with Mayor of River Heights, and he mentioned to me that he was interested in talking to us about building they own and potentially hosting the library there instead of Providence. It just reminded me that we had talked here, we were working on the budget last year, about having more discussions about our library, and just wanted to bring that up again, and maybe we want to have that discussion about our library and what our, what our plans are in relation to the library and growth going forward. And that could potentially lead into that discussion with them, if we'd like to have that discussion.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I would like a discussion, but also a presentation, like, how does our county library system work? Like, I'm just not familiar with it, so that as we make decisions and have discussions, that we have a basic understanding of that system.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great suggestion. That's what I was thinking as well, is that we could maybe start that discussion with the department report from the library and have our county librarian come and give a presentation about what the current state of affairs is.
Thank you.
So if that's what the council would like, we can get that on a future council agenda. And then, also, just wanted to mention, I met with our assessor about DMV operations, and just, we've been working and looking at costs of operation in relation to reimbursement from the state. And so we're, we're still doing some digging on that, and we, we're going to be talking to some leaders at the state. His, his thought is that, that amount of reimbursement he gets from the state to run the DMV is not sufficient, and it hasn't been increased in many years. So I just wanted to let you know, that's an ongoing discussion we're having in relation to that. We'll be talking to people at the state. And that concludes my report for this evening. Just want to mention, I do need to step out a little bit early for a church event pretty soon, so, thank you.
Thank you. No special interests, let's go ahead and we'll move right in with our Cache County Attorney, Dane Murray. Auctioneer style.
So, thank you for, I don't do anything on that.
We're going to hear this twice tonight.
Somebody turn volume one on. Thank you for allowing me to come present today. A list got sent around, and when I signed up, I was the only one that signed up, so.
Good on you, Dane.
I'm, I'm happy to speak to you as many weeks as you need me to come speak to fill some time. None of the other departments want to show up and report. Can you move to the next slide? So, today, I just kind of wanted to go through what, what is going on in the criminal justice system and what our office in law enforcement in Cache County has been dealing with over the past several years. So this is offense data collected by the state for Cache County, going back to 2017. And just bear in mind, this is only as good as the agency's reporting, but our agencies have been very good reporting. So some of, some of these years might not have complete data, but they're pretty darn good. And the 2022 data is missing November and December, it hasn't been added yet, which is kind of troubling when you, when you look at it and where we're at without two months in 2022 for all of our offenses. And then when you look at our violent offenses and those total numbers, you have, through 10 months, we had 291 violent offenses investigated by law enforcement compared to 122 in 2017. That's a major increase. I anticipate it being very close or even surpassing 2021 when we get that final data. Move to the next slide. This is person crimes by, by the classification. That orange line that's really tall, that's simple assault. Then also, on there's aggravated assault, fondling, intimidation, kidnapping, abduction, homicides, rapes, sexual assaults with an object, robbery, and statutory rape. And so this is Cache County each of those years. And this, this too would be missing those last two months, but that's, that's kind of the trend is a pretty sharp curve upward. This is specifically domestic violence offenses, which, that, that's extremely troubling to me when we're seeing that type of increase, especially we've surpassed last year without two months of data. So that, that is a trend that's going on around the state. You might hear, while our crime went down last year, our violent crime has gone up.
Dane, do you think that's because people are more willing to report it? You know, especially when it comes to domestic violence?
So I think, I think more so, when you're talking about sexual assault, when you're, there's definitely been an uptick on reporting and people feeling comfortable reporting. And I think that takes place over time. As far as domestic violence, a lot of those aren't actually reported by the victim, it's law enforcement responding to incidents because neighbors are calling or family members are calling. There's, there's a lot of reasons that might be taking place. Some of it goes back to some of the reforms at the state level. The prison moving and some of the changes the state's made because of a smaller prison population having, I know statewide, we're down, I talked to the Northern Utah Director of APMP. Last week, I went to lunch with him, and he said they're down 300 APMP agents statewide. So the, our worst parolees and probationers on felony offenses were down 300 agents who would normally be supervising them. We're down hundreds of correctional officers at our prison, and so that in turn releases people, there's a trend of people being released to less supervision than we traditionally have had. And then I, as we go through this, you'll just see, there's, there's just a trend in our society, it appears, of more violence. And if we could go over to the next slide there. This is, this is the reason, that, that exact thing is why I included this. So 2020 is the first year the state collected data on law enforcement officers assaulted and killed in the line of duty. And you look at the, the simple assaults, people are just more willing to assault police officers. And, I mean, that is a pretty steep increase in three years' time. And that, that's just, it's alarming to me, it's concerning. And I know, I know me and all of the law enforcement officials in this county are concerned with that. We're doing what we can at our local level, but some of this is just out of our hands as far as what the state does with people once we put them into the system. It's getting them treatment, getting them, holding them accountable for anything they do, it's, it's getting harder and harder. So that, that's something I want, I think the public should be aware of, I'd like the council to be aware of, and it transitions into something I've done in my office to try to combat some of this. There should be a few more tabs in here. So, our special victims caseload, and that's what we define as felony domestic violence, felony child physical abuse, sex offenses against children, sex offenses against adult, internet crimes against children, and homicides. So, traditionally, we've done three-year rotations with one attorney handling the caseload during that time. So from 2014 to 2016, we had 394 cases. The next three-year period, it jumped to 300, or 638 cases. And from the next three-year period ending last May, we were at 1,031 cases during that timeframe. If you could just go back to those numbers, just. So when we're talking about these cases, you have that many cases, but say if this is a felony domestic violence offense, you might have five victims, because you might have a mother or a girlfriend in the home, and then five children who witnessed the, the violence. So there's exponentially greater number of victims. When you're talking about family members who are affected, we're talking about thousands of people in our community who, just for these felony offenses, it doesn't even include our misdemeanor domestic violence offenses that are going to the justice courts or in the district court that aren't reaching that felony level yet. This is just our serious offenses where they have multiple prior convictions, there's serious bodily injury involved when you're talking about domestic violence, and then our, our sex offenses. And some of this goes, goes back to better reporting, better investigation for some of our sex offenses, but that can't account for that, that type of increase solely in just better reporting. So COVID has also created a problem. Not only has our cases increased substantially, but during that time when there was no jury trials for two years, these type of cases on regular timeframes can take two, three years to resolve because some of the sex offenses against children, you're talking about a 25 to life mandatory minimum, a lot of those cases go to trial. You don't have trials for two years, that gives you a two-year backlog, plus you're getting increasing number of new cases during that time. So during, during 2021, because I can tell you, during 2019 and 2020, I was handling that, that caseload solo, and I was running between courtrooms, and so luckily, we were able to add two new prosecutors. So we have three district court judges in Cache County. We traditionally had three felony prosecutors assigned to just our general felony calendar, and then one special victims prosecutor. Now we have three special victims prosecutors and three general felony prosecutors, so people can focus on one courtroom, they can have one victim advocate that they work with on their caseload. So that's, for our staff, been a much-needed improvement.
So are you up to full staff now on?
No, we are currently down three attorneys. We have two in the higher, in the onboarding process that should be starting within the next month. And that's, that's going to be, being down three attorneys in an office of our size, that's a lot of work that other people are having to shoulder on the criminal side, and it's work that, it doesn't slow down, you can't press pause, there's new cases coming in every day. Court doesn't slow down because we're understaffed, so people just had to step up. But we're really hopeful that we, I'm, I'm very happy with the, the two attorneys we've made, we've made offers to and they've accepted. I've had conversations with both of them in the last couple of days, and just getting them ready to be on board and moving people to where they're going to, the courtroom they're going to be. So that's going to help a lot.
Fantastic.
We had three, but the third one got, we got outbid.
Yeah, we did have, we did have another, another one.
We just made him a bunch of money.
Yeah, we, we couldn't match what, what Alaska could offer him, so.
[laughter]
Another complication to, to this type of case, even four years ago, when I started working these crimes, you might have, every few cases, there might be, we call them a phone dump or an extraction of a suspect's phone or a victim's phone to get the data off of there. Now, almost every single sexual assault case we're, we're prosecuting, there's typically warrants, there's a phone that's extracted, that you think of how much data is contained on your phone. That's terabytes of data when you're, in just one case. There's more data from social media that has to be scoured, because if, I guarantee you, I've seen it in trial, defense attorneys are going to spend the time to look up any negative thing they can use against a victim, anything. So we, we need to know that before we file a case, before we go to trial in a case. And so that's, that's more, it's not just like in the old days where you had a report, you had whatever evidence you could gather, talking to people, and that, that was it. Or maybe there's a surveillance camera. Now everyone's carrying around a camera and a computer and a GPS in their pocket, and things are being posted online. There's, there's so much data involved, and our officers are having to go through that, our prosecutors are having to go through that, our legal assistants have to go through it to make sure it sends discovery, so defense attorneys can look at it, our public defenders have to go through it so they can represent their clients. So it just becomes more complicated by the day of investigating a case, prosecuting a case, having that case go through the system. And then something, and this is, this is something great that our, it's happening in our community to an extent that some places in the state just don't have the, the resources, but our ICAC affiliates, our Internet Crimes Against Children affiliates from the AG's office have been great with their proactive enforcement, which, when I say proactive, they're doing online chats, getting people who are out there to come to, come to them, basically. And those, we've been aggressive on those prosecutions, we're sending people to prison off those cases. But that's usually, most of the cases that come to us are reactionary. Something happens, it gets reported, and we investigate. So this is adding to our caseload, but we're going out and finding these cases. So I applaud our law enforcement who's doing this and our prosecutors who are stepping up and holding people accountable on that. But that does add to our caseload, and those are data-intensive cases, it's all happening So as, prior to now, just the past couple of months, we've had prosecutors assigned to spec, our special victims cases, but they've never, and we've provided training and things, but it's never been cohesive as a unit, working together. So I've established a special victims unit where we're going to provide required training for, for our prosecutors. We're going to have meetings, they're going to have specialized assignments, both to give them the support they need, because I can tell you from doing it for three and a half years, it's a tough job, the, the looking victims in the face across the table and talking about these things, seeing the images you have to see, seeing, it's a tough job, and doing it alone is, is really a terrible, it, it can be tough on you. So this is both for, for our, our community and for the people doing this, having a unit where we train together, where we work together, that's going to be a benefit for, for everyone involved. As part of that unit, we have three, for all these cases, we have three attorneys, three victim advocates who work full-time on these cases, a legal assistant, which, Sharice Moser's our legal assistant, assigned to our special victims, and she does an amazing job. She, she handles a lot of work, handles a lot of difficult cases. And then our special investigator, Lieutenant Argyle. So we've been holding regular meetings where they all come together in a room, talk about cases they have in screening, talk about cases coming up to trial, making sure we're not missing anything from a victim's standpoint, and making sure we're doing everything we need to go forward on trial, go forward on investigations on these type of cases. Move on to. Our, we're also going to make an effort to have these attorneys assigned to the sexual assault response team, the domestic violence response team, and the multidisciplinary team through the CJC. We've, we've always been involved in those, but we can always make a better effort to be involved with our community partners, be involved with our other agencies, have specific assignments, so when issues arise with those, they know exactly who to go to, and it's not find someone at the attorney's office. And then, because of some of the, the turnover we've had in our office, we have some money in our budget and to help, one, keep people in, in these positions, and two, compensate them for the extra time that you put in on this type of case, I'm going to, I'm going to provide them a premium pay of $5,000 for, for each of them, and it would be $7,000 for the unit chief. That would be just a premium pay, it wouldn't be addition to their, their salary that comes in, it would be paid as a stipend at the end of the year. If they worked part of the year, it would be, it would be split between the, the individual who takes that position. But that's, I think, I think that's going to be important, keeping people in that, those positions, making sure that they're taken care of. And frankly, my, my wife would agree with this, that they can help take care of their families a little bit better when they're putting in the very long hours that, that go along with these caseloads, because it is, it's different than, than some of the other work we do. We did, I think, 13 jury trials in 2022, and every single one of them were a special victims case. And those are cases that take, I, I know from experience, you're working here until 3:00 in the morning, going home, sleeping for a couple hours, and you're back at 5:00 the next morning. It's, and it's tough on you, it's tough on your family, so hopefully that, that helps compensate them for that time. But I don't want, I didn't want any of, any of my employees feeling like, this is in my monthly, monthly check, I can't budget around this, I'm going to, I can't go off of these cases because my family relies on that every single month, because people can't do these cases forever. So, talking through with my staff, this was going, this was the best way to help compensate them without making it, so they didn't feel like they could move off these cases when it started having a big personal toll on them.
So is this something they'll do every year, at the end of each year, Dane?
Yes, yes. So it'd be, be at the end of the year, probably in the first paycheck of, I need to work with finance so it doesn't end up on the, the next year. And, and this is something, this year, it's in my budget, I will plan on this being in my budget in the future, making sure we have, with a full staff, we, we have this, I'll be asking for it in my budget if the council approves, but for this year, it's.
Policy there.
It's there. Any, any questions from the council on, on this? I just want to thank you all, I, I feel the support, I know my staff feels the support from, from each of you. And I, I know law enforcement feels the support, I, I've been in here when they've been honored by the council, and I know that they, they respect what the council's done for them this past couple of years, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're just about, it says right there, estimated 5:30, we can set those two public hearings if, if someone, one of you would like to actually set those. Do you have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for February 14th, ordinance 2023, hot iron storage rezone. And same time, I'll make a motion to do, set public hearing for February 14th again for ordinance 202305, comprehensive general plan amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moving to second, that we set the public hearing for February 14th, 2023, for ordinance 202304, hot iron storage rezone, and for the same date, ordinance 202305, comprehensive general plan, public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, so those will be set then for February 14th. And we're probably close enough to go ahead and we can work with the ordinance 202301, it's a public hearing. Let's go ahead and have a little, Mr. Watkins, would you share us some things about the Denali South rezone?
All right, well, it's good to be with you, council. Appreciate your attention to this rezone request. For your consideration is the request from A-10 Zone District, RU5. You're looking at kind of a contextual area map of Mendon to the north and about midpoint between Mendon and Wellsville, you see the star where the proposed rezone is located at approximately 3388 south along Highway 23. The orange area to the west side of Highway 23 or the left, just for context, is an RU2 zone, the rural 2 zone subdivision there. The red hatched areas that you see are different subdivisions, various A-10 subdivisions. And just a little background about this property, and the applicant is Representative David Rupp is here, questions them, but this was taken out of, removed from, amended out of the Bailey Acres subdivision, and that's the larger subdivision area you see. The Denali South Horse Ranch was amended out, and that's the highlighted yellow area. And that is a, a single lot with an agricultural remainder shown here in, in greater detail. You see a corner home, you see the agricultural remainder, and they're seeking the RU5 to allow for a second home site, and that they do have a shared access with the other subdivision as indicated.
With no effect to the change of the acreage, of the ag remainder?
The ag remainder would be reduced in, in creating a lot through a subdivision. And here's a view of the, the property and the, the proposed rezone area. Generally, the, and the planning commission did recommend unanimous approval. They, typically, without specific general plan guidance, that the trend has been that if there's a, a lot split request or addition of one lot, there seems to be support, start getting into larger subdivisions, seeking, well, seeking a rezone for larger subdivisions in the RU5 or RU2, there's been more hesitancy to recommend approval by the planning commission. So that's a recommendation from the planning commission and a bit of an overview for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and, we'll be back to you here in a sec. Oh my, Lance, how are you doing? Good. It's my lawyer. Anyway, they have to recluse us, anyway. We'll now go ahead and open it up to comments, public hearing for the Denali South rezone. Anyone like to speak of that?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any further questions that we have, Mr. Watkins, on this at all, like, as we're addressing it? If not, we'll be looking at it as initial proposal down on 11A here in a second. Let's go ahead and, if you'll take the mic again there, Mr. Watkins, and we'll turn it over to you to share some. there, Mr. Watkins, and we'll turn it over to you to share some information about the density and developable acreage title 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, for your consideration is ordinance amendment proposed by applicant represented by Seth Tate here this evening. And this was reviewed as a discussion item a few times with the planning commission, analyzed by staff and the planning commission, and looked at at a kind of a micro scale as well as a larger scale. Here you're looking at a larger scale analysis, which I'll summarize briefly, but the smaller scale issue is that if you have a 20-acre parcel, and property owner seeking to subdivide to two 10-acre lots or two lots, that the 20 acres could allow that one unit per 10-acre density, there's typically a right-of-way dedication process through a subdivision of, might require dedication of maybe a quarter acre or so of property to provide that additional right-of-way to meet current road standards. And in, so dedicating that property, it results that you're just under 20 acres and no longer able to, under our current code, no longer able to subdivide into two 10-acre lots or two lots averaging two units, one unit per 10 acres. And so that was the more micro context, but here's a graphic that staff and planning commission reviewed together, and what you're looking at from left to right, it's kind of a larger area analysis, and this is just about 300 acres, 290 acres, looking at on the left, the current code requirement to deduct the right-of-way area from the gross area to establish net acreage, which divided by 10-acre density, on the left would establish 29 potential homesites or lots. In comparison, if this requirement to remove the right-of-way area from the density calculation on the right, and you're just divided the 310, excuse me, so it's 310 gross acres and 290 net acres shown on the left, but if 310 gross acres was divided by 10 without having to remove that right-of-way, you'd have just a couple more homes or lots that are created. So the density really isn't substantially different, but the impact on property owners is quite substantial, and that basically the concern that was represented in the ordinance amendment. And so here, we're just looking at the proposed amendments to two general definitions in section 1707, 040, and you see that the density definition would just remove the net acreage requirement to deduct right-of-way areas for roads, and also in the developable acreage definition, that a development area, or development acreage does not include the public rights of way. And this interestingly said public parks as well, and the planning commission didn't feel that private development really had any precedent of developing public parks. It could be a private park, but that's the proposed amendment to our zoning code, and happy to respond to any further questions.
What, the main question I have is, this really doesn't apply to our current density codes. I mean, RU2, this wouldn't apply to an RU2, the example I'm talking about. Because that requires a two-acre home site, you can't get two-acre, you can't get 29 homes on a 10-acre lot. See what I'm saying?
If I understand your question, would this apply not just to the A-10, but how would it apply to the RU2 and RU5?
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we downsize a zone on a parcel property, the amount you get, 10 acres would be five parcels.
Yes, so we did discuss with the planning commission whether this should apply only to the A-10, or if it is not reducing or deducting the right-of-way area, should also apply to the RU5 and RU2, and they felt that, we didn't do as much of an analysis of the RU2 zone. The general plan discussion that we'll look at later this evening recommends maybe a different approach to future development in terms of rezones and how development might occur in the rural areas. So they felt comfortable forwarding a recommendation, this would apply to any resident, any development, whether it's our, excuse me, A-10, RU5, RU2, or even commercial zones, that the right-of-way would not be deducted from the density calculation. So I hope that answers your question. If I missed it, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think I see what you're saying. I was just, I guess my concern is, for years now, we have always taken the stance that the county, as a county, we don't really want to be in the subdivision, in the small, smaller acreage subdivision business because of the requirements for infrastructure, for services provided and things like that, that we're just not equipped to handle like a city would be. And in those cases, we would then suggest that they annex into a city so that they could access those kinds of services, because we just aren't set up or prepared to provide those kinds of services into, into the county itself.
Correct. I would point out, adding to your comment, that the configuration shown here is more of the, what we might consider as legal 2006 parcels, that some of them are less than 10 acres, some are more, some could be over 20 acres and subdivided. This shows a larger lot, more spread out development configuration. The current code does allow for a clustering approach, where there could be smaller lots, created as small as a half acre, but the same number as shown here, and just clustered and concentrated more, and, but not achieving that more urban form of development that you referenced.
Is there any other quick questions? We'll open it up for the public hearing, then we'll address it more after. Any other questions anyone needs right now? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf of this, or before, or for it, or against it, or whatever you need. Dr. Tate?
Thank you. Is it okay if I push this down? Oops. Not, I didn't mean literally off the podium. Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, thank you, and council members, appreciate the opportunity to address you. My name's Seth Tate, I am legal counsel over at Olson and Hogan, representing the applicant in this case. And I just want to give a little context for this, because I think when we see ordinances that use the word development or density, we all get a little antsy, and so this really has very little to do about that, and more so to do about exactions and the way they're used in the context of this. So the situation's somewhat unique, because my client has two 10-acre parcels in the A-10 zone, and they're exactly 10 acres. And so when they want to go in and legitimize those, and you know, and make them develop lots, put a house on there, when they go to do that, county code requires, as is understandable, that there's a dedication for necessary roads. In this case, 6,600, is it south or north? Anyway, there's a county road there, and it abuts the parcels. And when you dedicate that land, it's about .1 acres per lot, so it drops the lots to 9.9 acres. And so this causes a rub, and you have to understand, I mean, in our county, and you have to remember that John Locke said it before Jefferson did, right? Life, liberty, property. These, it's a fundamental constitutional right to control one's property. And so when the government requires, we give property to the government, it always stings a little bit. And, you know, in development circles, the word exaction, which is the constitutional term for that forced giving, it comes across as being extortion to some people, right? And anybody who's been in land use law deals with this a lot. So, but my clients understand the county needs roads. They don't have a problem with dedicating the necessary acreage to make the improvements to the county road. That's not the issue. I think what is odd is that the county code requires that they give their property to the county, and then the county code doesn't count that towards their acreage. So it's like a, it's like a double whammy for them, and it's salt in an open wound, and it stings a little bit. So on a fundamental fairness issue, we felt that the code should be amended so that it's not like a double taking. You know, here, we're gonna, we're from the county, we're here to help, we'll take your land, and then we don't count it towards your acreage, so now you can only build one house on two lots. And it also seems to cut against the idea that the ag 10 zone, we've already, a long time ago, set the policy one house per 10 acres, but now the effect of this definition of developable acreage makes it like a 20 zone, because if you have two 10-acre parcels, you really can't put a home on every 10 acres. So it seems to cut against the purpose of the zone, and I think on a fundamental fairness issue, it really struck my client in a rough way. And so as we looked into the code, we couldn't find any policy purpose for excluding rights of way or public parks. In fact, it seems to kind of have a counter incentive, like we want you to dedicate green space, but we're not going to count it towards your acreage. Seems strange. And so not finding really any strong policy reasons for that language, we have to assume it was probably boilerplate language that may have been in there in a carryover ordinance, and so this amendment just makes a whole lot of sense. We, as you saw in the, you know, staff did some analysis on really the impact on density, it's negligible. But for the one or two parcels that this really impacts, it's huge. And so the benefit to a single property owner is a whole lot in this case, and the impact on the general zone is very little. And that just makes good law, frankly, in my opinion. That's really the fundamental drive here. So to get at your question, Councilmember Ward, it's really not, it applies across all zones the way the planning commission wanted, you know, we kind of vetted this quite a bit with the planning commission. We didn't think there would be much impact even in the RU2 zone. Rarely do you see like an exactly two-acre parcel come in to develop, and there's dedication, it just doesn't happen very often. So again, this seems to be a good policy in a broad sense moving forward. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions if I can as part of that. Mr. Chairman, I probably took too much time, but anything else I can add to that, or answer any questions?
I know, I've got several questions. You've answered some, but Mr. Watkins has also, we'll go ahead and ask some questions here in just a minute. But anyone have questions? Mr. Tate? Okay, thank you. Any other one? Anyone else would like to speak?
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, we close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, would like to address this now or a little later, or just anyone else have some questions? I know I've actually reached out to Councilman Gunnel here on this very issue, where he's on, representing us on planning and zoning, and he had several questions himself, and so we may not act upon this tonight. It is, this is the initial, but it's up to you. I'm not going to say we will or will not, but he would appreciate it if we did not, in the phone call that he called, or that we talked with each other till he gets back, he had a few questions himself, and we could address it on February 14th. But other questions that I had was, I think Mr. Tate answered some, but I find that, I've been kind of disheartened that, that, you know, someone has, and there are a lot of 10-acre lots out there, and when someone, like for example, has 40 acres and has, without giving anything to the county, and then has there been instances where the county has come in and it has only been 9.8, and told, you told them, sorry, you cannot develop?
Specific.
After the county took their portion?
Well, I'm not.
They paid taxes for 100,000 years?
It's, I'm struggling to think of specific incidents and applications, but that message is delivered as, yes, this is what the county code requires, so that they're aware as they embark on an application or explore options with property. And oftentimes, there's enough acreage that by the time that right-of-way dedication occurs, it may not drop the number of lots that can be created, but once in a while it can. And so that issue came to a head here. And just for clarification, the property was divided previously without perhaps a full understanding that required land use authority review and approval through the planning commission and meeting the subdivision requirements. So that's why the 20 acres is now two 10-acre parcels, and they're seeking to rectify that and go through the proper subdivision application and review process. And so this right-of-way issue came into full view.
Because I think it's, I think every parcel that will be divided down the road and things like that, this will affect every single one, especially if it has any kind of, you know, it's going to affect them and how they do things, and it'll be differently. And I see what you're saying there. I think that just a strike of some words can definitely make, you know, better or change dramatically in how, what kind of answer they're going to get when they go to development services.
I will mention that oftentimes, and I don't know if we could get the screen back up, thank you. So looking again at this diagram, just trying to apply this as a broader analysis, this drawing depicts hypothetically if all of the right-of-way dedication was public. But oftentimes, and perhaps in many cases, the subdivisions apply private roads, which does not reduce the density. It's just where they have existing road frontage, they might dedicate another 10 feet or 20 and so forth. And so oftentimes, it doesn't affect their net density calculation, but once in a while, it seems to impact the owners.
But over time, a lot of those private roads turn into what? We can't afford to maintain them anymore. County, would you take care of all of it for us?
I, yeah.
I, I mean, that's serious, that's what, a lot of that happens, and then we're in a quandary with other things. So any other comments, questions?
I have a question, and this is going to show my basic misunderstanding of the county, because I've been on Logan City Planning and Zoning. So within the county, is it, it's all incorporated, correct?
Correct.
And you're saying this change would affect commercial application, commercial density? Like, are there commercial developments within the county that are not incorporated into a city?
That's a good question. I should clarify that a density calculation is a residential zone.
Okay. You're not talking about commercial density and how, well, it would, like if they did multifamily, is that allowed in the county? I haven't studied the county code yet.
Not in the typical A-10 and the RU5. Now, an accessory apartment is allowed, accessory to a single-family dwelling. So I appreciate that clarification. The density formula applies to residential zones.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I did just have one additional question. I was anticipating maybe it'd be asked or answered, but does action on this particular zoning precipitate that we would be reviewing and changing the same language on every zone? I think that's kind of what Carl was getting at. And if that's the case, I don't feel like I have a full understanding of the unintended consequences. It looks good to me. I mean, I'm on board so far, but the unintended consequences are a priority to me. I know that means you can't get them all, it's kind of an impossible thing to catch all of the unintended consequences, thus the title. But I would like a little more information, and as was requested, so that we could have maybe Councilmember Gunnel's input. If we can get some more clarification as how this would apply in the other zones, because I see this being a correct approach, but I want to understand how it would apply in all the zones before we get too far down the road.
Okay. Certainly provide more information to look at.
Other questions? Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Watkins.
Okay, let's go ahead and, well, we have no pending actions, we're moving right along. Let's talk about this initial proposal. Any other first questions on ordinance 202301, the Denali South rezone?
So clarification for me on 2023-02, we're going to hold off on that until the 14th, is that correct?
This is initial, we can do with it. That was kind of my view in talking with Councilman Gunnel. He would like to have some discussion on that when he gets back. So, but again, that's up to you as a council.
Mr. Chair, I would like to waive the rules and make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-01, the Denali South rezone.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moving to second, we waive the rules and.
Before we vote?
Yeah, and approve.
Can you clarify for me what we're doing by waiving the rules?
Okay, and approve ordinance 202301, the Denali South rezone. Now, because this is initial action, we have to waive the rules, which would actually then basically supers, then we. then we, what happens instead of in, on February 14th, we hear it for the second time and then act on it, we're actually waive that rule that has so much duration of time to where we can go ahead and move on it right now.
This is the final action on this?
This is the final action item on, on that would be right now. So, any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor then of waiving the rules and, and passing ordinance 2023-01, Denali South Rezone, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And then, ordinance 2023-02, would you like to act on that tonight, or can we?
Continue.
Is it okay that we wait till the February 14th on that? Go ahead.
A question of clarification to go with Councilmember Hertz. So, if we were to pass it without waiving the rules, we could still have action on it in the following meeting? I mean, I'm just trying to understand how this works.
If we go to pass it now, we have to waive the rules.
If you don't waive the rules, we have to wait.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, it's basically, it's something that, it's something that we do that, by right, that's something that we do. It doesn't mean anything unless you set that in motion.
Yes, so they're procedural rules. So, if you, if you choose to waive the rule, you can pass it today. If not, then it would be setting it over for the second hearing on that. At that point, you could pass it without any waiver of any procedural rule.
Shall resolution and ordinances have two hearings?
Okay, okay. Split two readings, okay.
And the rules, the rules in question are council's own rules.
Yes.
So, you're waiving council's own rules.
It's not a legal requirement. It's just the, the rules that council-
To have it be presented twice to the council unless waived?
Yes.
So, and in an effort to set the expectation, but we have the discretion to advance or expedite it.
Yes.
If we feel comfortable. Thank you for clarifying.
And that's exactly what we did in 2023-01 ordinance. They felt like we had enough there. And the other one seems pretty logical, but I, I would like to, that's up to you. I would like to actually, the wishes of Councilman Gunnel to be here.
I'm interested in more information.
Okay, so do I make a motion on that, David?
No, we don't have, there's no action is to be taken on that. It automatically just go to the next meeting.
Awesome.
So, let's go ahead. Actually, we'll go to attorneys here on ordinance 2023-03. And, or are you taking care of that one? Okay. Mr. Murray?
So, this is in response to state statute that was passed, no, no, I'm just having the, this is in response to a state statute that was passed that changed what counties and municipalities can do with their, their animal ordinances. Our, our county code was not in compliance with the state rule, therefore, for the past seven months or so, our, our county animal enforcement officers have not been able to cite unless it's under state code. They haven't been able to enforce our county code because it was illegal under state law. So, Jairus Kendall and I and our office put this together, putting our county code in compliance with state law to allow our sheriff's department to enforce most, most of our, our animal code that was unenforceable before. And that's a big deal, because the, the state code is very limited in when there can be any type of criminal charge or citation on an infraction for an animal violation. For the most part, under the county code, now there has to be an infraction, and after repeated violations, it can enhance. There are only certain circumstances where the first time there's an animal violation, it can be a, a class B misdemeanor. So, when I'm talking about infraction, that's basically just a civil penalty that comes with a fine. When I'm talking about a misdemeanor, that comes with potential jail time, not, not typical, but it also opens the door to restitution. So, if someone's dog is known to be vicious and is let loose and chases someone out and bites them, we can seek criminal restitution in a prosecution. This is important. I know our animal control has kind of felt handcuffed a little because they get calls from people who are having problems with neighbors' dogs being a nuisance, neighbors' dogs killing animals, things along those lines, and we don't have an enforcement mechanism. I know a lot of the, the cities have city codes that aren't enforceable, and our sheriff's department contracts with them. I've, I know, I think Nibley City was in touch with our office today. We've made it available for, for those cities to look at this and use it in getting city codes put together. But I would, I would ask that the council pass this and waive the rules because our, our animal control officers are kind of handcuffed right now, and it's important to get this enacted as soon as possible.
The only question I, I will-
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just noticed, Dane, on item D, it says individual's dog or cat, but yet, everything else pertains to a dog. You know, so, is there, do we need to include cat in all of that, or do we just need to strike cat from D and just keep this as a dog issue?
Item D under section-
Right.
Title page.
Yeah, the title page.
Title page.
It says, "An infraction for a violation pertaining to an individual's dog or cat." It's not, yeah, it's on the title page, page one.
Oh, on one of the whereas's?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, yeah, so that is, that is a reference to the Utah code, and which uses cat. This is only going to apply to dogs. There's, there's actually case law in Utah. Funny enough, the Supreme Court ruled that cats are different than dogs and aren't held to the same rules. Going back to a cat that scratched someone and-
Amazing what you learn, isn't it?
Sounds a different cat.
So, so, if, if the council's more comfortable just removing that from that whereas, it, it doesn't have any effect on what the council will actually be passing and putting into code.
Just want to make sure we wouldn't get in trouble with the wording on that.
Yeah.
The question I has, have relates to what if the dog gets loose without the owner's knowledge? Diggs under the fence and gets away and-
Someone else lets it out?
Yeah.
So, so, under, under Utah law, how, how it's typically been is you're, you're responsible for keeping your dog contained. If you, if your dog does get out-
Just like your kids.
The, yeah, just like, the first, the first offense is, is an infraction, so it'd be a fine if your dog's running at large, causing problems. At that point, you have the, the notice. I can tell you that, for the most part, our animal control officers use their discretion when giving someone a citation. I think that's, that's something I would, I would, just as a, we need to trust our, our law enforcement that they're using good judgment and discretion and aren't, aren't escalating things. Because sometimes, maybe that first time it got out, they kept their dog in such a careless manner that they, they need a citation, because what if they're, that would require, we need to look into all the circumstances in every single case. Were they keeping their dog in a, in a manner that was reasonable? So, if someone's dog really did just dig under a fence and that's the explanation, I think we need to leave it to our, my, my advice would leave it to our, our animal control officers, use their discretion, whether they cite someone. Because some, what, there could be a circumstance where that, that first time, it's pretty egregious and deserves a, a citation. And so, when we start micromanaging when they can cite them, we could have a serious situation where they need to be cited, they need to be put on notice, because it's the second time the dog gets out, we need to start, if it is egregious enough, we need to have that first conviction where we can enhance it later. I hope that answered your question, Councilman.
That was the short version.
Yeah. Gordy may find me for, I'm a lawyer.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we waive the rule. Oh, sorry.
Can I just bring one thing, one thing up? If you notice right there, if you, when you look at your, on all these ordinance changes and everything, all the, most of all these ordinances have been to the Ordinance and Policy Review Committee already. They've also vetted a bunch of it, and then it's brought to us for ratification and passage. And if you notice the different colorings on those, you know, blue, black, and red that's been lined out, you'll notice that tells you kind of the additions, changes, deletions, and everything that goes through, so that it helps you kind of follow through that. If you're looking at it under an iPad, it doesn't, a lot of these do not show up, and you're wondering what the changes are. But these iPads and this system that you, that you bring it in at, it's visible. So, okay, that was just an FYI for everybody there. So, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, I'll move that we waive the rules and approve ordinance 2023-03. Second.
Moving seconded, that we waive the rules. Pass ordinance 2023-03. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, is unanimous. 2023-06, Taylor, is this yours?
Good afternoon. This is the ordinance to create the Cache County Open Space Advisory Committee. This advisory committee would be empowered to evaluate and vet different applications for this money that we designated for the bond, this $20 million that was voted on this past year. The Cache Open Space Advisory Committee would advise the county council in the dispersment of these funds. You may have received the, a previous copy that, where the county council would be selecting the members. However, on a closer look of the state code, any committee, even an advisory committee with legislative function, any committee needs to have its members be appointed by the county executive with advice and consent of the county council. So, that may be a small, that's a small change from the versions that you have, but that change, it, it will be reflected in the final version. So, they have the updated version? Perfect. Finally, the, so, just to give you a brief overview, it's going to be seven voting members and two non-voting ex officio members, for a total of nine members. Four of the voting members will be experts in agriculture, trails, wildlife, waterways, or outdoor recreation. Three of the voting members will be selected from the general public, and the two ex officio members will be a member of the county council and an expert in agriculture. So, this committee will have meetings that are not open to the public unless they desire to have them. The reason this complies with the Open and Public Meetings Act is because they do not spend any money. They don't make any decisions. It's a purely advisory committee. So, their powers and duties as a result of that are fairly limited. They're going to be evaluating these proposals that are given to them, and using a criteria that they develop and they select, they will make these recommendations to the council on where to spend this open space bond money. Any questions?
I would, I'd just comment, I would hope that, that the county executive would consult with, with council members as to getting their input, their ideas, people that, who could serve on that in, in an effective way, and before they, he brings it to the council at least, so the council has some input and uses the council's, council members' ideas.
I, I agree that the advice and consent process should be a holistic process from start to finish, but I wouldn't presume to the executive on who he selects.
Any, so there's consent. Any ratification by the council on those members?
So, advice and consent, it contemplates that process. So, so if the council chooses not to consent, then at that point, he would have to select someone else.
I just want to make, I'm bringing that out. That'd be great.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You said that the criteria for accepting applications of properties would be set by this, this council, not, not us, but by this, Ozak?
That's correct.
Okay. When they come up with that criteria, would that be something that needs to be approved by the council before they, like, do they do that independently, or would we have some input into that criteria before projects start coming to us?
As it is a legislative advisory body, you have all the power in the world that you can set criteria if you have specific desires of criteria that you would like to see. Part of the requirements that they have is to make a presentation to the county council, no fewer than annually, with the purpose of updating that criteria and making sure that, that evaluation process is to your liking and helps you in your decision-making process.
I guess I'm a little confused. I, I thought, yeah, go ahead.
Well, no, I was part of that, the original board, very, very briefly, but the things that they talked about were having, I just feel like I would be more comfortable if, when they come up with their criteria, not that they would bring it to us and say, here's a project that we have approved under this criteria, but the criteria itself, before they even begin, that that is something that's brought before the council to say, here's, here's what we're going to use to accept applications. Here's the, the parameters. Does that, and, and that's not written into this code. And so, that's, that was, when I read through it, that was my-
Would that be part of the bylaws that they are to develop, and then could we approve those bylaws? That, that committee?
They, they would create their own bylaws, and they would approve their own bylaws. But if, if you desire, if you want to tailor it that way and mandate what criteria you want, we're more than happy to, to do that and add that in.
So, I, I thought this was really going to be much like RABSTAX. They, they come up with, people apply, they come up with their recommendations, and then it's brought to the council for approval.
Now, that part, it will all approval of the final monies in that. They're, they are, they put the, our advice together. They're an advisory board. They say, here we are. They will then send it to the council. We're the ones that disseminate the money.
That's correct.
Same thing as RABSTAX.
This, this advisory committee would not make any final decisions. They would only make recommendations and provide their evaluation on how they arrived at that recommendation or non-recommendation. Any final dispersment of money is up to the council.
Yeah, and I don't have any specific, like, I want them to make sure they use this criteria. I think they're pretty well set up to give us some really good recommendations of the criteria. But a lot of people in the public, as we were discussing this and trying to get it voted, that was what a lot of people's questions were. How will these, how will these projects be evaluated? And so, I just feel really strongly that that should be set up and, and brought to us for approval before they start accepting applications. Like, here's, and I think they can do that and bring it to us, and then maybe there's something we want to tweak.
Right. And if, yes, please.
Powers and duties, I think is what you're talking about, and the first point is creating, prioritizing, adopting, and applying the evaluation standards. Right there, this body would create the evaluation standards. And I was under the same impression as what two of you have mentioned, that those standards would have been something defined by the county council.
Yes.
That was at least how I interpreted what was marketed in the campaign.
Yeah, and I don't think-
And I feel strongly that's an important part.
Yeah. I don't think they're not going to do it good. I think they'll probably bring us something really good, but it, but whatever it is, I feel like we should be, I think the public depends on us to, to say then that we approve of that criteria.
We, we don't want to have to go through, how did you get to this point on every application?
Sure. I, I, I agree. And if I could just interject, I think that, you know, when, part of this ordinance allows the county attorney's office to be legal counsel to this committee. One of the things that we would advise them to do is, at least in the first year, not wait for an annual presentation of these bylaws and these rules, but to make that presentation as quickly as possible. This committee is, in its infancy, it's, this is, this is the conception period. The bylaws haven't even been written yet. The evaluation criteria have not been fully developed yet either. This is the first baby step in creating this committee. I feel confident that there are many other communities also that have bylaws, that have the evaluation scores, and this committee can have a public meeting and publish what those criteria are. That's something that we also, we would also advise them to do is make that- That's something that we would also advise them to do is make that criteria public. But as far as, this is, this is just the first baby step of creating this committee and moving forward. I can assure you that you would have input in the creation of those evaluation materials.
So, could you add right there where it says creating, prioritizing, adopting, and applying the evaluation, evaluation, the evaluation standards to be first approved by county council?
So, I, I'm sorry to butt in, Taylor, but I think the, the more appropriate place would to add under the county council authority under 276.7, the county council, just to add an amendment, the county council shall have the authority to approve the criteria and bylaws selected by, by the, the committee. And then, when they come up with it, that, that just gives you the power to, that requires them to bring it to the council for approval, which would.
Well, it gets everyone on the same page automatically.
Right from the start.
Yeah. And so, great ideas.
Of this council would be on that council. In theory, that should help represent our concern I have.
But only as advisory.
Correct. They're not voting members, which is my concern. And so, yeah, I think the advice and consent on adopting the policy, like Dana was just saying, I think is a good bit.
I agree.
Great. We can add that in. I'd be happy to add that in and then present you with the full updated version at your next meeting.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, please.
How soon will this money be available? Like, what's the timeline for collecting the money, starting to make those decisions once this board is up and running? What are we looking at?
Well, it's, you know, the comparison to RAPSTAX is apt, but it's not perfect. Because with a bond, you have to go to a bank and issue the bond and collect that money. And with property easements, like we're talking about here, conservation easements, I've had the chance to speak with different land trust experts here in the valley and elsewhere. The average conservation easement takes between 18 months to two years to complete. And the guide that I just spoke to, he works for the Sage Step Land Trust. He just finished a conservation easement that took 14 years to complete. That's not typical, but it gives you an idea of the timelines that we're dealing with. This is not, we sign a piece of paper and we exchange some money and then it's over. This is a, sometimes years-long process of checking due diligence and title searches and surveys, all that kind of stuff. So, as.
Partnerships.
Partnerships and seeking funding from the state, seeking funding from the feds, seeking donations from the landowner, which implies IRS implications. So, this is a process that takes some time. And as far as getting this up and running, it's going to take some time.
Thank you. If I may, Chair?
Do me that.
What is going to be the role of staff in this? Under what department will this be held? And they will set meetings and assist with that?
Currently, it's unclear. This, all this due diligence that I'm talking about, it, it can be expensive and onerous and laborious, and it can take a long time. So, whether or not this, we decide to enlist development services staff or staff from the recorder, or alternatively, contract out on an as-needed basis for the legal work, the due diligence and the title searches, it, it's an open question at this point. We're still, we're building it as we go. So.
So, starting off, is it going to be your baby? You're talking about this being a baby in its infancy. Is it your baby right now?
I mean, as far as getting it up and creating it, yes, that's, that's my role. In its day-to-day operation, that's something we'll have to discuss because it's time-consuming. And there are a lot of, there's a lot of need for other legal work in the other departments in the county. And if I wanted to vote, this could be a full-time job.
Right.
For any attorney. So, we'll have to discuss what we want to do as far as contracting on an as-needed basis or pushing this into county staff.
Thank you.
Of course.
The professional aspect of all these details is very arduous. It's very, you know, it's, there's a lot of moving parts. And then to bring them all together is, it's a lot bigger than we just encompassed thinking, oh, we're just going to go save the land. I mean, it's, it is, there's a lot to it. More, and when we set those meetings and we start trying to even comprehend everything, you know, and the costs of it. And yes, we should be able to take some administrative fees off of that to be able to, and how much landowners are going to have to take upon them. And, you know, and the follow-up for us to make sure it's all done right, there's a lot of, a lot of work involved in these things.
That's correct. And it, it takes maintenance in the long term as well. Because once this conservation easement is executed, at that point, the very next owner, I can guarantee, is going to try and pierce through that and try and develop it. So, you have to have ongoing maintenance to make sure that that easement is being taken care of and being defended legally if, if there's a challenge.
Which does trickle to most departments, not just to one. You know, it kind of trickles out to where things are followed through all the way on those plats, all the way through. Congratulations. You have three babies now.
Yes, I have two beautiful kids that live with me and one that stays at work. So.
Good job. He's a quick thinker.
Thank you. I will make that change and we can get this taken care of at your next meeting.
Great questions. Really appreciate, really appreciate that. And we'll, as you think more, you read more and that, write things down and come back the next meeting and, and see how we can make the changes. But appreciate that. Go ahead. And are you doing 23-06?
Yes, sir. This is, this is my teenager I'm trying to get out of the house. So. So, this is.
Careful, they'll be back when they're 20.
Part of the Cache Waste Consortium. Since, so, I, I'll tell you something great. This is probably the largest inter-local entity possibly in the state. So, the ordinance, the state statute that governs this is more applicable to cemeteries or small local districts that are just a couple of parcels. We're a little bit unique in the state because our inter-local entity covers the entire county minus a couple of cities. And so, as part of creation of an inter-local entity, you have to make a notice, a notification to the lieutenant governor's office of the creation of this inter-local entity. And it has to have, you have to include the agreement, which you've seen and approved in the past couple of months. And you also have to send in a, what's called a final local entity plat, which is created by the county surveyor. This just finished. We have presumably the final draft as of this morning. And so, we are ready to send this out to get it to the lieutenant governor's office and receive a certificate of creation, which will let others in the state know that this entity formally exists under Utah law. So, this is a formality that you're approving to send to the lieutenant governor of this entity that we've created by agreement.
And in the real document, that there is something under Exhibit B, right?
Yes, that's correct. I can, I can connect.
No. It's amazing, these little things that keep popping up here and there. You think everything's all done and.
Yes. And this doesn't happen very frequently in the state of Utah. In fact, when I called the lieutenant governor's office to make sure that we had all our boxes checked, the inter-local entity specialist said, oh, this is the first one I've ever done. I'm happy to go through it with you together. So, we've kind of all been learning as we go. This is that Exhibit B, this plat map. As you can see, it includes some of the municipalities in our county and others are excluded. So, this is a draft of the final that we will send to the lieutenant governor. Anyway, that's.
I don't think there's any approval of that. Is there to do that? That's just a formality to.
So, if, if I could just get a vote from you, voting to approve this notice of impending boundary action, that would be, that would be good for me.
Sandy pointed out, can you forward that plat to us?
Yes, I'd be happy to forward the final draft. Yes.
Timeline on that, is there, it's something that we could act on tonight, no problem. But is there kind of a rush to it?
Yes. So. Yes. So, statutorily, under the law, it says that we're supposed to do it within 30 days. We submitted our first batch of documents within the 30 days, but we were deficient in this annex, in this plat map. So, we are currently in a grace period. So, if we could get it done today, we would appreciate that.
Any questions? Will you entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, doesn't have a.
There's no ordinance resolution. We just can approve it.
A motion that we approve the notice of impending boundary action, creation of the Cache Waste Consortium.
A second.
Movement seconded, we approve the notice of impending boundary action, creation of the Cache Water, or Cache Waste Consortium. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work you're doing. Only take two babies home. Leave the others at work, right? Appreciate that. Now, item F, we had a numbering sequence on some, on a series of ordinances. This is just for FYI. We had a few ordinances that were passed last year that basically, there were two of them that were numbered the same way, for some reason. We stuttered, or whatever it was. And so, this correction to the numbering, if you'll see in your, you know, on your iPads and that, you'll see that there's a 26A and a 33A. And basically, we can't have two 26s, so we're just renumbering one of them 26A. No changes whatsoever in those ordinances at all. It's just a matter, they have a new number. Or, yeah, the right number, I should say. So, that's FYI, that that was done, so that no one's hit blindsided on that one. And we left them in that same order instead of putting, renumbering them and putting them down to more numbers at the bottom. We left them in that order so that they would still sequence when they were passed last year. So, that makes sense. So, okay. Let's go ahead and the discussion, we have talked a little bit about it. And we have a public hearing next, or in, on February 14th. We have set for the adopting of the Comprehensive General Plan. Amendment there, we'd like to, if, what, we bring that up right now for discussion on what questions. Some of this is like, it is a big document. It is a lot to digest. It isn't something that you just put on audiobooks and drive to Salt Lake and listen to without going off the road. But we'll go ahead and we've, Mr. Watkins, will you help us address some things if there are any questions? And we, we do have two weeks to try to get this thing taken care of. And as far as education, digging into it and everything. And feel free at any time to come in and talk to Development Services, I'm sure, if you have specific questions about them. But let's go ahead and, do you want a little brief synopsis about it?
I will. I'd be happy to. And just share maybe some, some key takeaways from the organization of the plan and the, the policy foundation that it provides and how the different components work together. Now, this is a graphic that's been shared throughout the, the plan drafting and review and adoption process. But I think what I'd like to do is just, and, and this graphic, by the way, is not in the plan. It's more just to, to show how integral the general plan and the two appendixes of regional collaboration, urban rural area assessment are. But I've recreated it to show, I think, more accurately how these work together. And what you're looking at here is a diagram showing the general plan as providing the land use policies and recommendations. This is the policy foundation for future growth and development, the land use vision in the county. I want to point out with the graphic to the lower left, this is just a little snippet of the future land use map in the general plan. Cache County is very unique in that we do have a countywide planning officer program, which was established in 1992 through inter-local agreement between the county and the cities. This was established with the recognition that this was a very special area and that the growth in one community, the choices made in one community can affect another, for better or for worse. And that there should be some communication and collaboration and, and work together to, to address land use choices, understanding impacts, as well as transportation and how those work together. The hatched areas that you see, you see kind of the gray color as the current municipal boundaries. The hatched areas that you see are some of the potential annexation areas. And the actual declared annexation areas are much larger than that for each municipality. But in that we have this unique countywide planning program and relationship and partnership with the municipalities, writing a general plan to reflect that has been a good challenge and an important consideration in how it's drafted and written. But I share this little graphic of the potential growth areas, the most likely growth areas where regional collaboration between municipalities and the counties is important. And helping the cities understand and the county explore how the growth should occur in unincorporated areas or how it's annexed in communities. And with that, one of the recommendations, the guiding principles in the general plan is that there be a regional collaboration approach moving forward. So, the Regional Collaboration Plan fulfills that policy recommendation, but it is more of an organization document that describes the multiple topics or categories, kind of sets the table for feeding at the regional collaboration table. And then the Urban and Rural Area Assessment Cost of Services Planning Scenarios is a study to explore the costs and benefits associated with different alternative growth patterns. These do not, these are not binding on the cities, but it's more just to provide a kind of reference material and the beginning of some collaborative discussions. So, I just wanted to distinguish the difference between the general plan core document and then the supporting appendices of Regional Collaboration Plan and the, the other long title that you see there. So, that's something I just wanted to clarify. If I could also point out that these guiding principles, the, the, the guiding principles, goals and strategies are organized in these categories that you see. And then some general statements. Here's what you'll find on page six in the plan. I'm sorry, it's a little fuzzy to look at. But it clarifies that the general plan represents a roadmap by which appointed and elected officials manage future growth, development of the county. The plan is to be used as a decision-making tool by which all requests and proposals before the, before the planning commission and county council are measured. And then in that third category, it says it's not regulatory and it does not automatically change code. It's an advisory policy document that is interwoven with county code documents. The State Enabling Act mandates consistency between the general plan and land use ordinance. It's not to say that everything in the general plan has to be implemented into code, but if there are changes to the code, it should at least reference and should be consistent with the general plan. And so, there's always an opportunity to amend the general plan. And then just one other kind of overarching consideration. And I, I forget the page number here, but this is the heading of chapter three, which states that it's important to understand that the goals, policies, and actions are limited to the extent that they are feasible and appropriate for the county to carry them out and permitted by federal and state law. So, policies that express intent to provide support or ensure, otherwise act, it's, does not indicate an irreversible commitment of the county funds or staff resources and should be feasible. And so, this is some of the language I just share that you could keep in mind as you review these different documents. Please.
Tim, where is it that we can all find the general plan? Where do we go?
There is a shared Google folder. And I could be happy to send that out or resend. It's a, it's a link in the text and I could make it a little more obvious and clickable. But those documents are in Google folder that you could all have access to.
Is it on the county site that we could go in and actually look at the plan or?
We could post it to the county website. Right now, it's a, a link in an email.
Okay.
And in public hearings, we've provided that link.
Hate to post it until it's gospel.
Right.
Okay.
I think it's already out there. I think it's already on the county website.
Oh, is it?
That's where I just found it.
Okay. I'll make sure that's the current version. I'll make sure that's the current version, and, but any public hearing in twenty twenty-two, the most recent version was posted in the public notices.
Other questions? On this, we could go ahead and do our due diligence and study it and. Now, I, I noticed you brought up some things that, uh, it's, basically, it's, once you pass, if it's passed, then it's not mandatory that we follow that, right?
You, you have, not mandatory that.
Regulatory.
Everything is implemented and passed into code, but there, if there is code passed that's not consistent with the general plan, it's a good idea to amend the general plan before changing the code, so that they're consistent with each other. That still provides the county with flexibility.
Okay. How will this affect, for example, when someone's coming in and getting a permits and working with Development Services for permits? Is it gonna be, is that a, that a plan going to be quoted like the Bible and thrown at them, say, hey, sorry, you don't fit the plan?
That's a good question. We often get questions about what's the possibility of rezoning my property? And I think the plan could provide some more guidance there to suggest that here's, uh, that's a decision to be made, reviewed by the commission and, uh, made by the council, but here's the land use policy guide in terms of the vision that they would compare it to. So we'd at least refer those types of inquiries, more legislative actions. Administratively, no, those are, now, some folks are looking for some change in code and, and hope to see some perhaps different code policies changed, and the, the county general plan in its draft form recommends some potential revisions to code that some folks might be interested in. Uh, we heard from some of them in last year's, uh, late last fall's public hearings, some folks looking for kind of a good balance between keeping agriculture functioning, but also having some more flexibility in development, maybe a density bonus to keep agriculture running, functioning. So that type of reference, but not a mandatory.
Until the council takes action to say, we're gonna amend this ordinance to match what the plan says, you go by the adopted code.
That's correct. Yes.
So, um, I'm new here, where, is this something that we've contracted with an outside contractor to come in and, and do this? Is this something we're doing in-house, where are we in the process, it's now coming to us for, um, review and adoption? We had like open houses and things like that, sorry, I'm not aware of all that.
It's a great question, and, in fact, it started before my time, I've been here since summer of twenty twenty-one, and it did have the challenge of going through a public process during the pandemic, which online meetings and so forth created some challenges as well as some turnover, but yes, there was, uh, Logan Simpson, uh, Design is a, a planning firm as the lead, and then with, uh, Horox Engineering and Zion Finance, I'm sorry, I've forgotten the, Public Finance, thank you. Uh, we're sub consultants, and, so it's, it's quite a bit to accomplish and a challenge to, to collect all of the, the feedback, but it's, it's survived, um, the continuity of getting through, and it's approaching its third year now. That's, we're two, two-plus years in, but a number of folks involved, kind of looking at a summary of, of the website visits, the online questionnaires, uh, the meetings, the open houses. And this graphic represents where folks came from to engage, and that includes folks in unincorporated county areas as well as in the, in the cities and towns. We did send a special flyer out to property owners that own, in the unincorporated area that own five acres or more, encouraged them to be aware of the, the questionnaire, so we, we believe that their feedback is represented. And then a drafting period of the plan has been underway over the summer of twenty twenty-two. We did hold a, a joint council commission workshop in March and just kind of looked at a review of the draft policy recommendations and kind of explored the level of interest, support and concern, and tried to vet those out and, and incorporate that into the draft.
One other question, it's just general understanding of the, the general plan. Most of my questions can be answered if this question can be answered, and that's, uh, is the state code and the county's, uh, view or, or interpretation of the requirements around a general plan the same as a municipality's?
Quite similar.
Code, does the state code identify that the general plan and some of its functionality for a county is different in some ways than for a municipality?
I appreciate that question, and it, it reminds me that there is another resolution that you will see in the coming weeks, which is a state-required moderate income housing report, not a plan, and we, we do have a moderate income housing plan, and, um, but what I've seen, uh, my previous role with Leyton City Planning and, and the county is they're very, very similar, and I, I don't know word for word how different they are, and it can depend on the, the class of county in terms of the population of the county and how urbanized the county is, but our population is just such that we, we step into that requirement to have a, a report and a plan for moderate income housing, which is challenging when we don't deliver sewer and water services in the county. But the accessory dwelling unit definitely helps check that, that requirement. So, uh, very similar, and, uh, it's, it's very much, uh, requires good public process and consideration of, um, being good, good regional collaborators and involving the planning commission. And, uh, a good steering committee, I have to mention, we had great steering committee involvement.
Go back to your map, well, the, just on input. Right there, okay, now this plan is to deal with every parcel in Cache County or only unincorporated Cache County?
It's a great question. The policies generally focus on growth in the county, but acknowledge, but, that some of that, and if, if I could just switch to, maybe this is the map you were thinking of, this is the future land use map. This map was created with the understanding that we need to consider land use change and management around the growth areas of the city with care and collaboration and, um, in good partnership with the municipalities. I think we have a good practice in place of seeking out, uh, the feedback from municipalities as to whether they'd like to service a parcel for development, but also acknowledging that property owners have rights, whether they're in the, in the, wish to remain in the county unincorporated area or in a municipality. So this map is created with, with that notion in mind that, um, the policies affect the unincorporated area, but regional collaboration helps to address the importance of, um, being good partners with our municipalities.
Okay, I'll go back to that map.
Sure.
That I had you. Okay. But really, it, it talks about, we say, being good partners with, you know, all the, the different incorporated areas and. But take a look right there, fifty-three percent, right, of the input came from where? The east side.
What does east side mean?
That includes municipalities, uh, I'd say from Millville to Hyde Park, and the unincorporated areas surrounding.
Add Smithfield in there and you start going, okay, that, that's a, that's a big chunk of incorporated area has had a huge input on how the unincorporated land with private ownership, with other ownership. That's the only worry, I still, you know, it's a worry that I have is having a, a lot of apartment dwellers or just smaller places having a huge impact on how they want to see Cache County versus, and how it affects the private landowners themselves. And I, they may not have differences, but how they may be zoned out of opportunities that they otherwise should have as a private landowner, and I don't want this document to be that final that, that basically caters to a fifty-three percent non-unincorporated land, landowners.
I appreciate that comment, uh, a couple of thoughts. One is that, um, we don't necessarily have who's in a city and who's in the unincorporated area, and these, these general areas, areas include the municipalities as well as nearby unincorporated land, so they're kind of mixed together. But your point's taken that there is a, a lot of feedback from that, uh, more urbanized corridor. Something I've observed in the past year of listening in to rezone hearings is that there is usually quite a mix of neighbors surrounding a rezone proposal from, say, an A-ten to an RU-five or an RU-two, and it seems that there's a mix of those in favor of getting a little more unincorporated rural density and those that want to keep it the way it is, and striking that balance has been challenging these, in these hearings. And I think what we tend to hear more from those in, that might represent, uh, the city dwellers or municipality dwellers is that they, they did tend to favor, uh, that where there are open space options, meaning fair compensation or development patterns that preserve open space and create incentives for such, or, uh, working with owners to see if they're supportive of a trail corridor finding its way between communities or, you know, along some natural areas. That's what many folks desire, is the desire to, to see some of the, the heritage and the beauty preserved, but there is a, a strong attempt in this plan to document that private property rights must be honored and respected in, in exploring these ideas.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The, maybe along the lines of what, uh, Chairman was mentioning, that's, my concern with, uh, these type of hearings is that, you know, you, you can get skewed data, right? And, uh, but I mean, that's the product of anything, the world is run by those who show up, right? But, uh, my concern is that, uh, and, and part of this concern is addressed by our system of government, but, uh, you know, I'm, a huge priority for me is community character, and that, I believe, is the reason and value in local government. And so municipalities should be able to govern and, and zone the way they choose, and they elect their representatives to carry that out. And so, uh, my overarching concern with any general plan or any of these types of things is that, I don't want to be guilty of overreach that I don't like from the federal government or the state government, and so I don't think, I kind of feel like maybe we're on the same page there, that the idea here is that we're not extending our opinion or we're not taking the opinion of these surveys and trumping the authority of local government. And I, as I review this, that is, you know, the, the filter or lens I'm looking through.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I, as interim director, could I make?
You bet, go ahead.
Sure, so, my positive and encouragement response to these comments is, actually, in my humble opinion, as the interim director of Development Services and my involvement over the last nine months, is that your most important role is in affecting the code, and this body here has that most important, uh, the role in doing that. And I know that even in our discussions over the last several months, we already have several ideas for code changes that we want you involved in and that we just need to help the citizens kind of have, you know, ba, do that balance between the citizens' rights, but also you, you, the council, really is setting that agenda on the code. And so that's, we, I would just say that as interim director, we're really hoping to, to ramp up the council's involvement in those code changes. We have some really low-hanging fruit on changes that just really make sense, like countywide for, for, for this kind of thing, for the development and land use, but then there are others that, I think, with your input, you can really steer the direction of the code. So, that's, I think, where the most important influence is for, I mean, this is important, right? And, and the land use map, I'd say, is probably the most, the strongest tool that comes along with the general plan. Uh, but, but the council is, is the, the core there, so we're excited to just work with you and get those, any changes that you guys, you know, want going forward in the code.
Thank you. I might just mention that in the slide presentation, which is also provided in the folder with the documents to review, there is this slide that summarizes the public comments shared at the September fifteenth council hearing, and these are individuals that represent property ownership in a pretty substantial area in, in the county, or folks who are looking to buy in the county, and so the, these are folks that would call and say, hey, we're interested in, um, you know, creating some homesites for the next generation, and I mentioned to them that there was some conversation about and debate as to how to balance development and also preserve agriculture and, and rural character and so forth. And, and so some of the ideas for clustering development, flexibility and transferring some development from one area to another, when described to them as part of the general plan focus, they seemed very interested, and they came out and, and supported that. But five individuals showed up to the hearing, although over two thousand were involved throughout the, the couple-year process, so I hope that's helpful perspective as well.
Was that a county council hearing or a city council hearing?
It's a county council, I apologize.
I was wondering which city.
We'll get that changed.
Okay, any other comments, we'll study it and we'll, we'll have the, uh, we'll talk about it on the February fourteenth, maybe some of the public will be here, so, okay, appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Watkins. Let's go ahead and we'll move on to this next item is H, and this is an item that has been brought to our attention that in, uh, we had a lot, a lot going on, a lot on our plate last fall. And, uh, in the process of changing with, uh, the attorney's office and with us, uh, working with some issues and. Anyway, in all the process, I remember very vivid, and I, and Terrell, you're gonna have to help us, help me in this if you can, but we, uh, we talked very strongly about, currently, she's doing three jobs, three full-time jobs for us here in the county, and, uh, it flat out, it shouldn't be. We talked about this, I think it was late summer.
Yeah.
And, uh, we agreed at that point, I remember, that we were, we were going to make sure that things were in the budget and to be hiring.
A CJC director.
Basically, a full-time, a full-time director to take one of the, one of the jobs off of her, so she only has two now. And, uh, I remember very vivid, we talked about all that, but apparently, in all the changes and everything, that was not put in to the budget for the attorneys, uh, when it, when it should have been.
Right.
Okay, now, now that being the case, our next budget opening is, is not scheduled till March. And, uh, and we don't, at least I'm not very much in favor of having a budget opening every other week kind of deal, you know, it's, we've kind of done them, a possibility of having them maybe quarterly, uh, but she needs help, and now. And so what we're doing is we're reaching out, and I think in talking with, hopefully Amy, that she's mentioned we can maybe go ahead and get this, uh, process of, this person interviewed, hired and everything in the next few weeks, and then make that change in addition to the, in the next budget opening, to make sure that the money there is to, to carry on. How do you feel about that as a new council, and what are your thoughts there? Could we go ahead and give the go-ahead to get that taken care of?
I support that, absolutely.
I, I would really appreciate it. Um, I've been doing these, the combined thing for over three years now. I didn't plan on being a CJC director, I had to clean up some things, it took, Phil and I in the finance office about nine months, and then we started the building, I've got that up and running, and I feel like right now would probably be a really good time. I'm still doing on-scene response, I was in court, um, last week a lot to cover for a victim advocate, I was in court this week to cover. Um, I was in doing the law enforcement, um, first mental, the, the first responder mental health program and victim services. So it's not like I'm not doing, I'm still out in the middle of the night, and I'll tell you, I can tell you that now, at my age, it's really hard to pull an all-nighter and go to work the next day, I don't function well anymore.
She used to be six inches taller.
I used to be, yeah.
And I, I'll, I'll speak up for Terrell, because a lot of people don't know this, but we should actually refer to her as Dr. Warner, because while she's been working, and, and it's more than three full-time jobs for a normal person, but Terrell can fit them all into one day somehow, but she was working on her PhD and received her PhD in psychology with an emphasis in trauma while she was working these multiple jobs. So I'm gonna.
It's been a lovely couple of years, thank you. Thank you.
But it would be great to get that off her plate and get someone else in to run the Children's Justice Center. I would appreciate that.
So if that's okay, we'll be in full agreement to go ahead and get that process taken care of and underway. For fear that you're going to move to Costa Rica.
I know. I keep telling my husband, but he says five years. He's got five years to teach, so.
Well, maybe with the budget opening, we need to put in there a line item for a date night for Terrell.
I'm sure Alec would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I'll just pay for it. No, that's, we appreciate that. And that was an oversight I remember very vivid, and so we'll make sure we get that thing taken care of.
And I'll let Amy know.
Okay. Appreciate that. And so we will see that in the next budget opening. And so we're kind of aware of it, but we don't want to stymie the process, because that can be a three-weeks-a-month type of deal. You know, we want to make sure that we're not, we need to get it going. So the last one is CASL training. Now CASL, that is the financial program that is used. And you're all, Micah, I believe you've talked with them. You've now got access, okay? And we should all have access to CASL. And basically seeing, it's a read-only access, but we can see the financial system in real time, which is, you know, that we're seeing things as they're happening, hopefully. Now, I guess what I'm bringing up is it's always good to have some training with that. Now, I've talked with Cameron, or we texted here just a while ago, and he can provide some of that training. Some of the other, we can have in-house training. Or we can also have the people from CASL, they can come up and they'd be happy to train us too. So it isn't bad for us to see two aspects of it. And maybe we can do this in a workshop, or what are your thoughts there? Let me share, or have you guys shared those?
Well, I think it works better if you can kind of do a one-on-one training. You sit here in a workshop and have somebody go through it without you being able to do hands-on is not as effective. So I would suggest that we each commit to calling Cameron and setting up a time to sit down with him at his, when he has time. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I know. We tried the training one time as a group, and it was hard, because some of us couldn't get into it. Some of us couldn't see what was going on. So I agree with you, Carl, probably contact, each one of us contact him and get some one-on-one.
He's going to love us.
Camera's good. He won't, he won't grow up.
Should we go with that, see how it goes? And if we feel like we want, I just, I always think that you can get training. I guess I was in the school district too long. You get training from certain people, this is how it was to be. And then all of a sudden, when you got training from other people that see it from the outside in, all of a sudden, it is a whole other set of questions that would open up. And that's why I bring it up is to, if we, maybe let's go ahead and get some personal training. You're the personal trainer, aren't you?
None of this.
We'll go get our personal training there with Cameron here, and let's put a timeline on it. The next one, I don't want to burden him, but what, a month?
We could piggyback one, you know, two people at a time. Being aware of his time.
That's true. Should help him probably. You know, help him on his schedule. Let's, go ahead.
I was going to say, we've got Micah here. Could he set up those appointments? If we'll let him know when we're available, could he set those up for us with Cameron?
That'll work out great.
And then after we're all comfortable getting into the program, you know, in the basics, then maybe we have a group workshop with CASLs.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
They would be able to help us identify, you know, this is how we've always done it, but maybe there's something that's come along since we, we as an organization were originally trained that can make it more efficient for us to work. There's something I think that's where you were going with.
And, you know, they, outside people said, well, this is what to look for. You know, they kind of give you those things that they would help us as we do that. So let's go ahead, let's give it us maybe a month, maybe in March, then we'll maybe, we'll kind of talk about it and see what we do and arrange something from there. Terrific. Okay. At this point, let's go, Micah, would you stand up and just introduce yourself? You have actually talked with most of us, or several of us.
Yeah, I've talked with most of you. My name is Micah Safson. Started last week as policy analyst here at the Cache County Council. Just coming here from working at Utah State as a public relations specialist there at the Utah Water Research Laboratory. And before that, was a student there in political science. Excited to be here and working with seven members of the council.
We're excited to have you.
Welcome, Micah.
Thank you.
Now, if you have questions, you'll find the answer.
That's right.
Go ahead, Tom.
So can I, just for my benefit, I know that this was advertised and hired before my time on council. So can either council, excuse me, Mr. Chair, or Micah, would you kind of outline what your expectations, you know, what our expectations of your role are?
Sure. Well, my job is to work for seven of you. And so provide any sort of help you need. I think I was meeting with Councilman Hurd yesterday, and I think, I think it kind of clicked the right way in my brains. My job is both to set the capital A agenda of these meetings, but also the lowercase a agenda of what the council needs and what each council member needs. So if there's, if there's any, any specific, if you have a question on an upcoming ordinance that's going to be voted on or that we're going to start hearing about, and you're not sure what's going on, talk to me, and I can get that information for you. Or anything like that, that, or if there's an ordinance that maybe you have an idea for, you know, I can, we can get that started. And I can work with the chair and vice chair to start that process, so, you know.
He's going to be heavily involved in the policy and ordinance committee meetings also. And then he's already been assigned to attend some committee meetings and make up the agenda for those and take notes on those. And for example, we had a budget committee meeting yesterday, and he's going to be sending those meet, meeting notes out to the members of the committee. But also, I think I would like to have the council members be able to have a look at those too, so that they know what was discussed in the budget.
Absolutely, I can.
I think that's a great.
Yeah.
For those, the rest of the council members, yeah.
There's a lot of follow-up work that we do that, once we leave here, want to make sure that he follows up, that it gets, it gets all the way to the end of the road.
I'm very aware that all seven of you have other responsibilities and full-time jobs or other jobs that you have to attend to. But for me, this is my full-time job. I'm here all day, every day, and I'm the person that can, if there's something that you aren't able to take care of, because you've got other things to do, I'm here and I can, I'm happy to do whatever you need.
Did you hear that? He is happy to do whatever we need.
Thanks. Thanks, Micah.
I'm hungry. Terrific.
Thank you, Micah.
Yeah, appreciate that. 12A, the MOU, who's got that?
Well, do we need to have a motion to move into the?
Oh, hang on. Oh, that's right, that's right, service area.
I'll make the motion that we move into the Cache County Service Area Number One, Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move in second, move into the Cache County Service Area Number One, Board of Trustees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have a small explanation of what that is.
Yes. Service Area One was put together, it is basically the collection, the garbage solid waste collection. We are currently, right now, we are the Board of Trustees for all solid waste collection in Cache County.
Okay.
And that was set up as Service Area Number One, in which we worked very close. There was a solid waste advisory board that was established and which had all the, several of the mayors represented to that. They were an advisory board. They would then put together policies, or things like that, that they would like us to adapt, fee schedules, all of that stuff. They'd bring us to the county council, and then we would look at it. And we're the ones that actually did the thumbs up, thumbs down on everything. Now, that's going to be changing here. Logan's decided to pull out, and you're all aware of all the garbage that's been going on with that, so. Nothing against Logan City, but that's, so anyway, go ahead then.
So this is, and we've talked a little bit about this earlier with the solid waste consortium that's been created. That's going to be Cache County and most of the municipalities outside of Logan City, minus a couple that have chosen to go on their own. This is a memorandum of understanding between Cache County, and there's a provision in this that will assign, once the, I guess not Cache County, but the Board of Trustees and Service Area One. When Service Area One is dissolved in June and becomes the Trash Waste Consortium, subsection 6.3 in this assigns it to any successor organization. So everything in this MOU will just continue on with the Cash Waste Consortium. And what this memorandum of understanding does is, one, it continues Logan City collecting waste for Service Area One past June of this year, because currently they've terminated collection, and they've agreed to continue until 2025 if needed. Based on what I'm hearing from the consortium, hopefully, that's, we're only going to go a few months past that June date. I know Logan City is going to be working with the consortium and the hauler that's chosen to get them outfitted with trucks and things that Logan's no longer going to need. This also creates a rate-setting committee. So the consortium will be involved in setting the rates for hauling fees to the landfill. And it's going to be based on the tonnage hauled. And so, right, currently Logan City will have more representation on that. But as more tonnage comes from the county, the county will have greater representation on that. And that basically prevents the county from Logan jacking up the county's rate without the county having representation there. There were a couple of questions last, last year from previous council members about, and I guess to say it bluntly, how does Cache County get screwed in this? I think that might be the exact term that one of our council members asked me.
I can't believe you talk like that.
I've gone over this. I've talked to Logan City's attorney.
That's what you're going to do.
I don't believe, I don't believe there's any way that you can ever contract out of someone who's trying to, to do something wrong in the contract. I believe Logan City is coming to this in good faith. I believe Cache County is acting in good faith. There's still going to be direct haul to the Logan Transfer Station, talking with their waste, their solid waste department over there. In the MOU, it says, if there's sufficient capacity. But for Logan City's needs, if there's run out of capacity, they plan on expanding that station. They don't want to get in the business of checking IDs of who's bringing waste there. It's not feasible for them. For green waste, they're currently building a green waste facility out by their new sewer facility. They're going to continue allowing county residents to come there. It's going to, there's going to be some changes to, even to Logan City residents, but it's in Logan City's interest to have green waste deposited there, not at the landfill, because there's additional requirements for methane mitigation if all that green waste goes to the landfill. So I would ask, I know Logan City's anxious to have this approved. We are coming up, I know June seems like a long time away, but I think they'd like to know that we are agreeing to this. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer. I know Chairman has been involved in these conversations. I wish Councilman Gunnell's here, because I know he's been involved. But as far as this MOU, I would ask that we take action on it today, because Logan City would like to get moving so they know that we are committing to not only them continuing to haul trash, but to the rate-setting committee and the partnership continuing between Logan City and their landfills. I would add one more thing. This does include, so currently, and I know some of the council members know this, but the north landfill out in Clarkston, there isn't a direct haul. That mean, if you're not Logan City garbage truck, you can't just take a truckload of garbage there. They are agreeing.
Legally.
Legally. That may or may not be happening. And I think some of that goes back to some of the opposition to the conditional use permit. But now that there's a land, now the landfill's actually out there, people out on the north end don't want to drive all the way to Logan to direct haul. And so I think there's more support for maybe changing that conditional use permit. The problem is, you can't just amend a conditional use permit. It's a full application process for a new conditional use permit. But Logan City is agreeing as part of this MOU to apply for a new conditional use permit. So county residents who live on the north end don't have to drive all the way to the Logan Transfer Station to do direct haul. And I think that's going to be, that's going to be important just for quality of life for people that live up in Richmond, not to have to drive all the way to Logan to drop off their leaves and stuff they picked up out of their yard. So there's a lot of benefit for Cache County residents in this. This isn't something that's just one-sided for Logan City.
Okay.
The only issue, and I don't know where we sit on that, I hadn't been following the legislative sessions carefully, but one of the conditions is the repealing of Senate Bill 203.
And I can talk to that. So last year, there was a Senate Bill 203 enacted, Utah Code Section 196808.5, which basically said any municipality who has a landfill, any profits from that go to the state, who then send it to the county where the landfill's located. So Logan City, basically any money they would make off the landfill would come to the county. There's a provision in here, if that isn't repealed, the county will agree to, when we get the money, give it back to Logan City, so they're not taking a huge loss on running a landfill. But Representatives Snyder and Senator Sandel have proposed House Bill 110, has the Senate sponsored with Senator Sandel, it's before the House of Representatives now, I think has a committee hearing coming up. I'm hearing that it's going to be repealed. I think there's good support for that. There's a lot of unintended consequences from its passage last year, so.
Yeah. There's several people in the state that are happy that it also will be gone. But anyway, that's, I've talked with Representative Snyder specifically too. And he, that's basically all said and done. As soon as we get this thing taken care of, then basically, and Logan also will appreciate that. So they're not held hostage in any way.
Do we vote on this tonight?
Yeah. It's up to you.
Well, since everybody's quiet, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Logan City and Cache County Service Area Number One.
I'll second it.
Second, we approve memorandum of understanding between Logan City and Cache County Service Area Number One. Are there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, so.
Chair, I'd like to just add that I know a lot of work went into this.
Yes, a lot.
And it's, I think it's been worked out very well, and thank you to everyone that really worked on this. It was a hard deal.
Appreciate that. Appreciate it, so. Okay, let's jump down there to 13A.
Let's see.
Oh, we got to get out, we got to get out of service area.
Cache County Service Area Number One, Board of Trustees.
All those, is there any second on that? Moving second, we get out of Cache County, or that we, get out of here, now that we. uh.
Yeah, the Board of Trustees.
Anyway, that we're out of the Cache County Service Area Number One, Board of Trustees, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will leave that. Now, let's get on to twenty twenty-three Councilmember goals. Let's start, Carl, could you?
Yeah.
Share your, what you've kind of come up with, and.
Two goals I want to focus on. First is finally getting the Davenport Road. I think I put that on every year.
You're not alone.
So, so Dane, we need your help.
We can talk about that later, but.
The second goal I have is, we need to do a redistricting of voting districts in Logan City. The one that we did last year, kind of hurriedly, ended up with District One being, you got one little.
Sliver.
Panhandle.
Yeah.
And, and then the rest of it down here, and it doesn't jive geographically with.
Good point.
With the neighborhoods, so.
You mean precincts?
Precinct, well.
What are we talking about?
Precincts included in the district, so.
Oh, okay.
Carl, if you want to work with my office on that, if you want to designate Carl as the liaison for the council, we'd be happy to work with you.
I, I intended to do that, so, yep.
Okay, good.
Those are my two goals.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Gidlander.
My main goals for this year are to just learn, there's so much to learn about county policies, and something that's really, really important to me, and, and part of the reason I, one of the biggest reasons I did this job is, I care deeply about the budget, I want to understand it, I feel like, you know, it's a lot of money that we have stewardship over, and I just, and I don't think it's been mishandled, but I just think it's, it's important for me to learn it and make sure that I'm paying attention to those things. That's.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, in addition, I too intend to learn the best I can, and, and become familiar with those many elements of the functions and services the county provides, and become more familiar with those that I'm not as familiar with currently. I wrote down a couple of goals, top priority for me, and I think it goes without saying, but is our purpose and existence in the first place as a government entity, but to adequately fund and fully support our Sheriff's Office, our Justice Department, continue the good things that have been talked about, like we did tonight on the discussion with the CJC Director, you know, that, that is our primary function, at least I believe, or perceived to be, the role of government is, is in the defense of justice and, and the individual's rights, and Sheriff's Office, the Attorney's Office, et cetera, all encompass that responsibility, and that falls to us to adequately, meaning, give them what they need, and be prudent and, and judicious with the funding, so we're not overfunding, and that requires a lot of understanding on our part, at least, that's how I see it. And another priority for me, or, or goal, is to advance the conversation around irrigation water and secondary water services and systems in the, in the valley, and how we can work with funding mechanisms available to the county to support ag users, secondary water users, and, and facilitate new infrastructure that can bring demand from, for irrigation purposes off culinary systems, and, and utilize the canal systems and other delivery methods that, that are better suited for, and don't require the treatment and, and oversight that culinary water requires. And then, just in general, a review of all our services and policies to, through the lens and filter of their constitutionality.
Thank you.
All right, I have, I, of course, as you know, represent the West Side of Logan City, and I feel like I need to be more responsible in attending those city meetings and attending the city council meetings, so I'm going to make more of an effort to attend those meetings so that I can represent my constituents a little better than what I have been. And one of my other goals is I want to work closely with Councilman Erickson and our new policy analyst, so that we make sure that Micah knows what he should be doing, and, of course, that's a two-way process, and you need to let me know how I can help you, or if I, you know, if you see something that I could be doing better, I really would appreciate that. And then, I, I want to work closely with my department heads, with Sheriff Jensen and with Amy, and really have a good setup with them, and be able to work closely with them.
Appreciate that. Miss Gies.
Thank you. Being new to this, it kind of feels like you're drinking out of a fire hydrant, so I think I'm going to start with some baby steps.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, one of those is, I would like to meet, just briefly, with each department, kind of get a broad overview of what each department does, what, again, this doesn't have to be too detailed, but just what they do, maybe ask them to just introduce me to some of their employees and see, kind of meet and, and greet with them. Also, I, this is kind of for my own benefit, because I totally geek out on this kind of things, but I really want to tour our facilities. I went when the new facility was finished up in the Hyrum, the Public Works Facility, that was so cool, when I toured that, I thought that thing was, was so amazing, and I would really like to go and, and tour the facilities and see just what it is that they're, where they're serving, and, and what services they provide. Another thing that was recommended to me by my good friend Terrell is I should do a ride-along, she says it's really eye-opening, and I'm kind of scared, but I, I'm gonna do it, yeah, I would really like to, to do a ride-along. Yeah.
Appreciate it. Don't do ride-alongs on dance nights.
Oh.
That's all, that's all I'll say about that. Because, because when I taught at Skyview, some of them were in your class the next day, so anyway. I appreciate that very much. My goals, so I'm, I've looked at is to, number one, well, not number one, they're not numbered really, but finalize a, this sounds weird, but I want to finalize a smooth transition of solid waste. So, laugh at as you like, but you know, this whole, as we're going through this whole process, you know, where it's, it's working, and it, the ball's rolling pretty smooth, I think we're, we're getting there, but we hopefully hear, like you said, like, you know, like you say, hopefully by the end of the year that we're there.
You want it to go all smoothly.
Yes, so, anyway, finalize, and the other thing is, I want to finalize our, the county council's forensic audit, and then implement possible positive changes that we have coming. I think that will, that will be enlightening to us, we will hear a lot more about that in the coming weeks and, and months, I'm sure, as we get that put together, and I think that, that's, that's also a priority of mine. So, Carl, we're all with you, at least I'm all with you, on the solidifying the Davenport Road determination with agreements and everything.
Yep.
I think that we, we, I'm not anxious to make that a full freeway, I am anxious to get some determination, and with some agreements.
Right.
And.
So, people can have access to.
People have what access, but not, maybe not the huge access that people would all like to have, that can come later, respecting private property. So, that's one. Anyway, we'll talk more about that one. I want to verify and demand honesty from all information givers to the county council. So, as information is brought to us, I want to be, us to be able to, to gain confidence in, as that information is provided to us, that it is honest information, then we can make good policy from there. Continually strengthen the camaraderie of the county council, I, I see that strengthening with us, I think that we're, we're, we're doing very well there, and I think that, I think we will get very comfortable and start thinking, know how each other, each of us think, and I think that'll be very important. And then, the last one I'm not going to bring up, that'll be something that I'll probably just bring up at another time, when we're having to be, I just got a thing with Development Services that I'd like to make sure that we get, I, I probably get more calls from people that are concerned about the processes in Development Services, and the confusion, and the sequencing of things, and when they get something done, all of a sudden, there's another thing that's, they get it done exactly what they said, and then there's, minds changed, I mean, it's, there's a lot of confusion and a lot of the public clamor about Development Services, and so we need to, we need to correct some things there.
I'm sure that Dirk would, will be very happy when he finally have a Development Services Director.
Can provide a lot of insight in, on that goal.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's huge.
And I, I don't know why it's been delayed so long to hire somebody, I understand we've had three applications of qualified people, but there's been no action taken, and I, I don't know why, I think it's something we need to.
We're starting on that.
Are we?
Yeah, we've got some work going on with that.
Okay.
On February sixth, we'll be interviewing some people.
Okay. Uh.
Good news.
Let's see, how about, let's go to, was it the board? The members, boards, committees, all those, everyone look at those, any changes now that you've thought about it for another couple of weeks?
That's good to me.
I thought that when we talked about it last time, that, that I had the victim services. Did you, didn't you think that, Catherine, that you were doing the, the Justice Center, and I was doing the victim services that we were.
Yeah, when I looked at that, I thought, I, well, you've had so many, I wondered if you, I didn't.
Well, what was discussed was, because both of those are with Terrell, that we thought it'd probably be.
Might be easier to have.
Yeah, probably just have one person with that, is that agreeable to you, Terrell?
Yeah, that would be fine, but we're gonna have. But we will have to.
You're gonna have what?
We're gonna have a new CJC Director.
Oh, that's right, okay. Okay, well, let's sign that when that happens, is that okay, Council?
Oh, yeah, I, I was gonna say, with that, why don't we leave that as it is, we get the new hiry, and then.
Yeah.
Sandy, and, and, if you just, you work it out, and we can make that change later, no problem, whatever works out best.
Yeah, I'm fine.
There's no, I think, Terrell?
I just wanted to be, I just wanted to work with Terrell.
Yeah. Okay, well, just, you three fight it out, okay?
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
I'm interested to see who wins, so, okay, that's terrific, if that works out, then we'll go with what we've been assigned, what we look like there, and again, this is subject to change, if something happens, and, and you got some more interest, and, you know, but hopefully, you got four years to learn everything you can and, and get a taste of everything there, so, okay, we got UAC Building Conference, and with these right here, what we do is, we bring these up, and if you've got interest in going to those, what we try to do, we kind of say who may or who may, may not be going, if you'd like to, whatever, our, I guess it'd be Micah now, which will be then trained to go ahead and get those reservations, get those details and everything, to make sure that we're taken care of if we attend those. So, we got UAC Building Utah, and the conference is April fourth and fifth.
You can put me down for that, Micah, and I'm gonna talk.
Question mark.
Mr. Chair, would you tell us the difference between those, because what's the Building Utah Conference and the Management?
I did not go to this, you want to, go ahead, come on up here, Dr. Phillips.
This is Building Utah. A long time ago, they used to have something called the, like a road school, so this one is very much oriented around roads, kind of policies, they've started inviting even lower tiers, so you'll have more construction workers, superintendents, public works directors, and they try to put on a conference that kind of spans a lot of those, so that you're all kind of getting in the same room, but it's, but it's a very special part of UAC, so.
Which one is that?
That's the Building Utah one in April fourth and fifth.
And you said that is what used to be the road.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the, the road school went away for a couple of years, they reinvent, reinvented it, changed the name, this will be the third year that they've put it on, so the, and we've gone to all of them, they, they're just still, still trying to find out who to invite, what kind of meetings to put on, I know some of the exec went last year, we've gone a couple, it's, for us, it's been great.
A lot of product, procedure, and a lot of policy development.
Yeah.
Equipment.
There's equipment.
A little bit of everything that is shared there, which is a counter responsibility of most all counties that have miles, miles and miles of road and other public works.
It's gonna be focused on transportation, those types of issues, and your meetings and such will be on that as well, so.
I stick right next to you, Matt, so you can explain things to me.
Yep, that is during Cache County's spring break, so, I don't know how widespread the spring break is, but that's right during the heart of spring break for Cache County, so.
In St. George.
In St. George.
Yeah. You better get a place to stay real fast.
Yeah, I'll bet I talk to you real soon.
Yeah, that makes sense there.
And what's the other one?
And the management.
The UAC Management Conference, that is, that's basically kind of like a leadership where all of UAC is invited to come to the Salt Palace this year, has been at the Davis County, Davis County, what'd they call it, Convention Center, that they come in, and they'll have all different topics affecting, everything from recorder's office, clerk's office, county council, commissioner meetings and everything. It is, it's where, it's, there's a lot of networking done at those meetings, but there'll be a, that agenda is usually established by the UAC Council, which is, Barbara is now a part of representing Cache County on that, and they'll put most of that together, and then our UAC leadership finalizes and gets the speakers, gets the, you know, all of the professionals there that need to be, and they, it's, it's a nice, it is really, it's a good event, and I've always enjoyed them that I've gone, the timing of it is horrendous, I wish, I wish it was in February, but it always worked out really good, it's a good one to go to.
Thank you.
And it isn't that far, well, when it was in Davis, it wasn't that far, but Salt Palace, you're probably gonna go down there and stay, and so, and we usually, when we get to this point in the schedule, we'll ask whether someone is interested, and they'll put a question mark by you, or if you're, so that we can start planning a little bit, and Micah then can start getting some things taken care of.
Question mark.
So, and there is some time there that we've still got between now and, you know, even the fourteenth, as you look at schedules and plan accordingly, so, questions, go ahead, Barbara.
Is this one where the spouses can go with, or do they not? Because I know the one in November, the spouses have gone in the.
Spouses are always welcome.
They're always welcome, but there's, there's nothing, there is nothing specifically for them.
Right.
In the conference itself, but they can go spend money somewhere else, so.
Okay.
Basically, right? Yeah, you, I found, yeah, we both found that out, so. Great, any others?
Thank you.
If, I don't, I think we'll probably digest for that in a couple of weeks, and, sorry, on the, on the fourteenth, and we can give you more detail from there, so, okay, Council, we kind of went over some goals and that, but Carl, let's start over, any kind of specific report?
No, we, we had a brag meeting last week, but nothing specific to report.
I went to the, that UAC meeting in Salt Lake last week, I'm probably gonna go to the one this week, mostly just, like I said, to learn things, but it was really interesting to hear what some of their legislative priorities are, and I'll try and take better notes and report back.
Remind us on that Zoom call, it is every?
Thursday.
Every Thursday at ten, and it, it's really beneficial, if there's any of you that can even Zoom, I think it is a good call.
Yeah, I also was able to attend the new, newly-elected officials training that Sandy mentioned, and I felt like that was, that was a good overview and, and way to become re-familiar with some of the, the things that, that we need to be concerned with and what's going on, and then the day with the legislature was also very, it was a good opportunity to network with our local delegation, as well as get an understanding of the tone for this session. The Zoom meeting was great for the workshop, I have resolved the issue with my access to the tracker, so I can vote this next meeting. That'll be, I think that's a great tool, I mean, that's.
I didn't see your name on there, I go, well, you.
I just wanted to listen at that point, but I've got it set up, so I can vote now, and I think that's a great tool, I think that's a good opportunity to provide UAC with, with the directive or direction of, of the members on the policy that they seek to support or to, to stand against, so, that was good. We had a Budget Committee meeting yesterday, and Barbara probably knows better what to report, so I won't get into it more than that.
No, go ahead.
We talked about a, a schedule for the outline, a calendar was presented by Cameron for outlining the steps necessary for staff and for the council to take to lead up to and result in meeting all the state requirements for timelines on the budgeting process, and give everyone a heads up as to the expectations for each hurdle, if you will, and so that'll be coming to this body, I think, to review, and then the Budget Committee would, would follow that in our discussions as we meet monthly.
I think we've already had that, that calendar. We had that all set up and going for a little while, but it got, it got derailed, so.
Yeah, it was mentioned that it's been done before and getting back to it.
It's a good thing.
And, yeah, I think it'll be good, and a lot of, there's some things that, action items that the committee will work on and then present to this group to take some steps with, but more to come there.
Appreciate it, Barbara?
I'm serving on like five steering committees for UAC, and I tried to get in on all the calls today, but didn't get really successful on getting on completely all of them, looks like Tuesdays, every Tuesday's gonna be Zoom Call Day, we're down there, but I, what did have some really good interaction on the Social and Human Services Steering Committee, and I've talked to a couple of you about some of the things that, the bills that they're looking at and that way there. On the Budget Committee, one of the things that I've asked Cameron to give us a really good report on is the ARPA funds, because last year, I feel like we kinda got lost in the process, and as Sandy said, we need to know exactly what has been distributed and, you know, what's left, and, and go from there, so that we can be more clear on what we're working with there. I do plan to go down to the legislature every other Thursday, my schedule doesn't allow me every Thursday, but I'm gonna try to make it down there every other Thursday. And the last thing is, we need to have a party. And we didn't have a Christmas or holiday party, you know, because things were just crazy, so I need to know dates that would work for everyone, if you want to send me a date, we will invite the retired board members also, and go from there. I can, I could probably take the responsibility of naming a place that we're gonna go.
What do you have in mind?
Think of Friday or Saturday.
Yeah, probably a Friday evening, would that work for everyone?
Monday works great for me.
With their spouses?
Yes, this will include your spouses, so Friday evening, awesome. Okay, um, what time of the evening are you looking at?
Where's it at?
Yeah. Are we eating dinner?
Yes, we're gonna eat dinner, um, what's some of your places that you like to go to eat?
Janine, what's your schedule?
Yeah, Janine.
Oh, I'm not.
Yes, you're coming, you've always been to every other one, and Micah, and your wife will be invited, so, what, six o'clock, is that good? Friday evening at six? Okay, reservations, shall we go to someplace like Beehive Grill?
Do they have enough capacity?
Probably not for everyone there, Elements, there's Elements, anybody can throw out anything that they want, that they'd like to go to, I'm open to it.
Also, my mind went blank, I don't even know.
Your mind went blank?
Who has capacity to take us?
Elements or, you know, that area down there usually has a room large enough for everyone.
Some Fridays may be a little.
Yeah.
Tough to get into.
Little iffy.
But I think we, early on, I think we can probably do it.
Should I go for Elements then?
Yeah, sure.
What date do you want, soon?
Isn't that the place that paints their, their plates with chocolate and stuff like that? They make their, everything look fancy.
Yeah.
Well, if we go, uh.
We don't have a council meeting now for three weeks, so we oughta fit something in between now and February fourteenth.
Okay. All right, let's see, Friday night, we have the third and the tenth. As Fridays be look, before the fourteenth.
Tenth works better for me.
The tenth? Me too, I have a family wedding on the third in Boise.
Okay, tenth.
Works for me.
All right, so put it on your calendars, we're gonna go to Elements if I can get, long as I can get reservations, but please send me a count.
Okay.
Of how many, all right, and.
She's a corporate jet. Corporate jet.
February tenth, six o'clock, at Elements, okay? Send me a number and I'll call them tomorrow and get an estimation of how many people we want. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Oh, thank you, yeah, so, um, real quick, I really appreciated going down to the meeting with the legislature with the, any of you that were in attendance, I thought it was a really good experience, I really appreciate that our legislation, our legislators taking time to meet with us, and I thought it was really beneficial. Also, today, the county here hosted the New Americans in Utah, New Americans is just anybody who wasn't born here that now lives here, kind of a thing, and I thought it was fascinating, talked a lot about the demographics of who is here in Utah, who's here in Cache County, and what kinds of contributions they have to our local economy, they put dollar signs on that, I thought that was really interesting, and also what industries are relying heavily on, on their labor, as well as what kind of services and what can we do to integrate these individuals into our community, so I thought it was fascinating, I brought a little takeaway, if anybody wants to look at it, it breaks down those numbers of their, their spending power and their contributions to the workforce, so I thought that was, was really interesting, and I think this is something we're gonna go forward and meet quarterly or, or something, but I thought it was a really good meeting today.
Okay, uh, as Barbara and I met with Micah the other day, we wanna make, just wanna reiterate, please, you have access to him all the time, you don't have to go through us or anything, please, and he's, he's open, if you, you need anything, appointments, whatever it may be, go to Micah and he'll take care of it.
Micah, do you have a direct phone number?
Yeah, it's four three five seven five five one eight four zero, that's my office number, I can also give you my cell phone number.
Is that what you texted us on, like, on your cell?
I texted you on my, yeah, I texted you on my cell.
Okay.
You don't wanna put that on the public directory?
I, no, don't, don't, yeah. Don't. So, anyway, I just wanna reiterate that, and we've had, you know, we've, we've got some good, good things happening, and I appreciate all of you on the council, I, I look forward to a great year, it, we've got some, there are some challenges in the, in the future, but it's nothing that we can't handle, that I can promise, we'll take care of it, so, appreciate you, any other questions?